Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation from Reverend Dr. Carol Harrison Braddy, Senior Pastor of New Faith Apostolic Ministries in Rex, Georgia. If you would, stand with me, we'll follow.
Now Faith Apostolic Church.
Now Faith Apostolic.
Now Faith Apostolic.
What she said.
Yes.
Apologies Pastor. And then we will have our pledge of allegiance led to us by retired Master Sergeant Patricia Basden.
Let us think on these words as we meditate. "The work which we must do. I've appointed you this day over the nations and over the kingdoms to pluck up and to break down, to destroy and to overthrow, to build and to plant." Jeremiah 1:10. Father, we thank you. We come before you with thanksgiving. Enter into your gates, God, with praise and thanksgiving. You alone are worthy to be praised. In the midst of this world that we live in, God, wars, rumors of wars, kingdoms against kingdoms, houses divided, God, we say thank you that we're still standing. We thank you that someone didn't wake up last night, but those of us that are here are breathing. And we give you honor, God. We ask that you guide us, that as our commissioners, make decisions tonight, that they know that they are the ministers of God. We give you honor first, God, and we ask that you bless Chairman Turner. We ask that you bless our commissioner of our great district, District 1, Now Faith Apostolic Ministries, Commissioner Gregory. Touch her, God. God, my commissioner, Commissioner Demont Davis, touch him, God. And Lord God, touch Commissioner Gail Hambury. Even in her absence, God, touch Felicia Warner. Touch our police chief. Lord, touch every elected official. Lord, touch our superintendent. Lord God, bless our school district, God. We thank you that we're moving in the right direction. And we pray right now that we continue to move in the right direction in this community, in this county called Clayton. The stones that the builders once rejected, we are becoming the chief cornerstone. Amen.
Recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sergeant, Sergeant Master, is this is retired Sergeant Master, is it Sergeant Major or Sergeant Master?
Sergeant.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, okay. All right, I'm gonna ask my colleagues to meet me down on the lower level so we can honor and acknowledge. Oh, wait a minute, let's go ahead and do the agenda first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Welcome to the March 5th, 2019 Regular Business Meeting of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member of the board want to offer an amendment?
Yes. Under the consent agenda, if we would pull out I, 1821, also P, Resolution 201931.
Is I and P pulled to the regular agenda?
Yes, please. Pull it on the regular.
Regular agenda? Are there any other amendments?
All right, is there a motion to take I and P off of the consent agenda and place on the regular agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Any other changes, amendments, felicities? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Oh, we didn't take a motion that way. All right, I'm ahead of myself, I'm ahead of myself. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. All right, at this time, at this time, we're gonna recognize Patricia Basden as the March Veteran of the Month. She is retired Sergeant Master. And let me give you a little bio on her. Patricia Basden joined the United States Army in her senior year of high school on April 10th, 1986, through a delayed entry program. She served proudly for 36 years, six months, and one day for God, country, and community. Retired Master Sergeant, Basden continues to serve her community as a member of the following veteran organizations: Ryan Winslow, American Legion, Post 911 Hoover, Alabama; Helen K. Dent, VFW, Post 3650 in Fayetteville, Georgia; William E. Tate, DAV Chapter 1, Morrow, Georgia; Greater Atlanta Chapter Associate of the United States Army; American Military Retirees Association; American Veterans Quartermasters Association; University of Connecticut Entrepreneur Disabled Veteran Program; Team Red, White, and Blue; Wounded Warrior Project, Inc.; The Missions Continues; Women's Veterans Club of CSRA. I don't know how you have time to do anything else. Please, give her a warm round of applause as we go down to the recognizing ones.
Next, we will have a proclamation by the Chairman, March for Meals Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes March 2019 as March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002, and since March of 2012, Clayton County has actively been engaged in recognizing the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act Nutritions Programs for both congregate and home-delivered meal programs, and raising awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger and isolation in America and Clayton County. And whereas programs such as the Clayton County Meals on Wheels Program works diligently to help seniors maintain their health, safety, and independence that could possibly prevent repeated hospitalization stays, financial abuse, and/or premature institutionalization as our most vulnerable population. And whereas volunteers and senior advocates and the Meals on Wheels and aging staff serve as the backbone of the program, additionally, these unique individuals not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors who are at risk of hunger and isolation, but they also come together to work as a cohesive county network to address the overall welfare and safety of seniors. The Meals on Wheels Program is proud to have established invaluable partnerships with Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Clayton County Public Safety Officers, and other local business community advocates such as the Olive Garden located in Morrow, Georgia; Hook and Bull BBQ, Restaurant in Jonesboro, Georgia; South Atlanta Magazine; Southern Regional Medical Center; Gen Care, Atlanta Family Hospice, and Ashton Walk Apartments. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2019 to be March for Meals Month and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors that they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. A recognition of and involvement in the National 2019 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fifth day of March in the year 2019.
Our next proclamation is to honor Ms. Addie Whitaker with all of her friends, family, and zag. Please come forward with her.
And while Ms. Whitaker is coming up, I'm gonna tell you a little story. Ms. Whitaker banks at the Associated Credit Union in Ellinwood, and she went in one day and found out that they were planning to move that location. They were gonna close the location and looking to move somewhere else.
The next thing I know... Okay, and the next thing I know is Ms. Whitaker was calling me, well, I guess before she called me, she got in touch with the regional manager of the Associated Credit Union. And she scheduled a luncheon for me and some other people so that we can find some land for the Associated Credit Union to move because she was not gonna have them moving out of Clayton County. And we do know they were looking at some sites in Rockdale County. They were even looking at some sites down in Henry County. But again, just her persistence, and she kept going in there until she had all the regional managers down for lunch at Ann and Bill's in Forest Park. And we decided, and they decided, that they were going to build right here in Clayton County. Last month, we were supposed to have a groundbreaking, but the weather, that big snowstorm we had canceled it. And so we didn't have it that day. So when you look at citizens like this, we're always talking about taking ownership of your community. And just her efforts of going out and going the extra mile. I mean, there were times in between, get the groundbreaking and so forth, that I couldn't get in touch with anybody associated, economic development could. So we had to call Ms. Whitaker. Can you please get in touch with them? So we just wanna honor her tonight for everything that she's doing, and family members and zag members. Mr. Stevens, Calphani Stevens from Economic Development, if you would come up, please. Thank you.
And it doesn't hurt if you have a whole lot of money in the bank, too. Thank you for your work.
Family, there are family members and key members of the zag.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors Ms. Addie L. Whitaker, March 5th, 2019. Whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners urges the citizens of Clayton County to take ownership in the community by being an involved, informed, and engaged citizen. Addie L. Whitaker, resident and homeowner in Ellinwood, Clayton County, works tirelessly to make her community better. And whereas for 28 years, Addie L. Whitaker enjoyed a thriving career with Fulton County government. She worked as the Registration Manager in the Registration and Elections Division, and worked as the Administration Manager at the Fulton County Juvenile Court Division. She is a graduate of Georgia State University, College of Public and Urban Affairs with a Bachelor of Science degree. She also has a Master of Science in Administration from Central Michigan University. And whereas Addie L. Whitaker is always pleasant and helpful to her children, grandchildren, citizens of Clayton County, and anyone seeking her assistance, she is an exemplary role model for any age group and proof of what can be accomplished when one is determined to succeed. And whereas Ms. Whitaker is well-regarded as a leader's leader and devotes 100% to any task, using these attributes, she was successful in convincing the Associated Federal Credit Union to build a new location in Clayton County when the financial institution started to look at other sites. Anyone who meets Ms. Whitaker is touched by her compassion, strength, and sincerity for Clayton County. The county applauds her commitment to meet community needs through leadership, outreach, and prayer. She has greatly contributed to the well-being of our county by being an advocate for positive change. Now therefore, I, Sana Single Gregory of District 1, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate and honor Addie L. Whitaker for her outstanding contributions to this county by simply caring and going the extra mile. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fifth day of March in the year 2019.
Next, we will have some presentations, starting with Atlanta Transit Link Authority, presented by Chris Tomlinson, Executive Director of the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority.
Good evening, Chairman Turner, members of the Clayton County Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to come down and present, tell you a little bit about the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority. Just wanna give you a quick overview. I know you have a busy agenda, and I look forward to further follow-up discussions on what this can mean and how we can be of helping and service to Clayton County. Again, my name's Chris Tomlinson. I serve as interim Executive Director for the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority, as well as the State Road and Tollway Authority, better known as the Peach Pass People, as well as the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. And the presentation might be a little shorter than you think. Okay, no control. The Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority is a new state-level authority that was signed into law last year. And for the first time ever, the state has basically come around to realizing what a key component transit means for the entire metropolitan area. Clearly, Clayton County was ahead of the state in its thinking when it decided to join MARTA. So we're playing a little bit of catch-up, but I'm a fast learner. And so this is a new authority of which Commissioner Warner actually sits on the board. What are some of the benefits of this new authority, the ATL? What our charge is, is to take all of the different transit operations and systems that are operating throughout the 13-county metro area, and how can we mesh these together to be a more seamless network? So this is not a substitute for, it's certainly not a replacement of MARTA, but when you think about the state's, for example, express service, which I also operate, how can we better coordinate, connect it into the MARTA system so people have more options to get in through and around this region? It's about partnerships with those agencies and trying to create a more seamless experience for customers. One of the reasons that the state has come around to getting further involved in transit is because of the economic development impact that transit can have to the communities that it's in, and our ability to connect thriving workforces to different economic activity and job centers. What you see on the slide here is a couple of companies who have literally cited that transit and transit connectivity was key to their site selection. I wanna draw your attention specifically to Mercedes-Benz of North America and State Farm. These are two companies where the automobile is central to their business model, but transit is one of the key reasons they selected their sites in Atlanta. The ATL is created by a bill, House Bill 930, has five main parts. I'm gonna touch really quick on the governance, the transit plan, branding, because that's been one of these areas that's been controversial, as well as what we're doing with the existing operators. Go past this one, I wanna go ahead and just sort of get to the meat of it in terms of your time. The ATL has a very unique board for a state agency, 16-member board, one non-voting member, that's the G-Doc Commissioner. 10 members are appointed through local caucuses. That's how Commissioner Warner was selected. And, but 10 out of 15 board members selected through a local process. It's reflective of the fact that so much of the money that's going to the transit comes from local sources. As far as I know, this is the only state board where the overwhelming majority of seats that's going to guide this agency are through a local process. There are five members appointed at the state level, only one by the governor, two by the Speaker of the House, and two by the Lieutenant Governor. As you can see on that last bullet point, Commissioner Warner, as well as Howard Mosby, who's a retired state-elected official, represent portions of Clayton County. The main core activity of this entity is to create a regional transit plan. This is going to be a comprehensive plan of all projects in the 13-county region that are planned to be funded either in whole or in part with either state or federal funds. Several entities have gone out and created transit plans. In the area of Clayton County, you guys have been working very closely with the representatives of MARTA on what we call the Clayton Locally Preferred Alternatives, which is looking at both commuter rail and new bus rapid transit. What this plan is going to do, this is not a substitute for those efforts, but how do we connect up these to the work that's being done in Decab, which is looking at transit plans, the work that's already been done by the City of Atlanta, by Fulton County, and others? So we have one connected network throughout this region. One of the ways we're going to do this is, the board is going to be guided through some selection criteria. And what you see on the slide here are the six governing principles for the ATL board to make sure that when we're looking at these plans and prioritization, we're looking at land use. We're looking at mobility and access. Are we providing meaningful connections to workers, to jobs and job centers? What's the return on investment for the monies that are being invested in this region? What's it do for the environment? And are we thinking outside the box with innovation? And last and certainly not least, because quite frankly, it's threaded throughout, what are we doing for equity? Everybody's focused, especially with all this talk about Gwinnett, about these new big expansions, but there's a lot of meaningful things that we can do by providing better service and better connectivity to our workers in this region and to other activity centers. And we're gonna make sure that this overall regional transit plan does just that. I'm gonna move past this because right now, I'm pretty sure Clayton County is paying a lot of money into the MARTA system and isn't really looking at paying additional sales tax, but there are provisions in there for that. In the interest of time, I'm gonna keep it moving. And this, we already talked about, not only are we gonna do plans, but what we're going to do is come up with regional policies and standards. One of the things that I mentioned was bus rapid transit. That can mean a lot of different things. I also sit as a non-voting member of the MARTA board. And when we start looking at, say, for example, the bus rapid transit projects in Clayton County, there's actually a couple of different phases. One of the jobs of the ATL is to make sure that what we talk about is meeting citizens' expectations. The first phase of that project is looking at some enhancing, we call transit signal prioritization. To me, it's actually Phase 2, where you start to see bus rapid transit. We're talking about something that's dedicated, it's not getting stuck in traffic. As a region, can we, we wanna make sure that we have similar definitions. So the projects that we're looking at on the north side of the region and the projects we're looking at on the south side have the same benefits to the citizens and are meeting the same standards. Branding. What you see at the bottom, and if you haven't noticed it yet after this, you'll probably start noticing, you'll see the ATL logo on the rear quarter panel of MARTA buses. So we refer to this as co-branding. This is gonna be an indication that all of this is part of a connected network. There's a lot of things we're gonna be doing behind the scenes so that things can interact better. What you see is the express buses on top, and we, we and the ATL board has to make a decision on whether it's going to be co-branding, or whether we come up with something that's rebranding for anything that is regional or is just the ATL service. And this is something that the board will be looking at. We're gonna be working not only with public-sector transit operators, but private-sector ones as well. We're not gonna substitute local, home rule decisions on how people feel about scooters, but what, like, for example, we know those are here. How do we integrate? but like, for example, we know those are here, how do we integrate those into the system? Uber and Lyft, we're trying to get more people to consider transit, they're trying to get the park and ride lots. Can we do some innovative partnership with Uber and Lyft? Maybe there's discounts if you use those rather than driving and parking in the park and ride lots. These are some of the outside-the-box things that we're talking to both our public sectors as well as private sector operators about. And this is a list of the things that we're working on, but I'll sum up the highlights. By the end of calendar year 2019, we will produce the first regional transit plan. This will again be that comprehensive list. Coming up this week, there's, it will be the third ATL Board Meeting. They'll be adopting those governing principles that we saw, and asking us a lot of questions about how will this plan and planning process come together. From there, we're going to continue to work with our partners at the Atlanta Regional Commission on how we interact with those processes. This is not a substitute for the Regional Commission. Your Chairman has been heavily involved with the Regional Commission, so how do we integrate with the work that's going on there? Because transit is just one component of our overall ecosystem of transportation. It went pretty fast, because you have a full agenda, but these are some of the things that we're working on. We're also hopefully going to embark on some pilots using technology to further weave together the different systems that are going on. It's sort of good that you have, you can see where your bus is with MARTA. Express has an app, the Gwinnett system has an app, Cobb has an app. You literally can't go anywhere online and find all the transit routes in this region in one place, let alone access them through one application. These are some of the technology enhancements that we're going to be working on. Again, I went quickly. I wanted to come down here personally, I wanted you to get to know my face. There are particular projects that the Clayton County is interested on. I just wanted you to know, you have another voice in place that can also help advance those projects, be it working in partnership with MARTA or even outside of it. We're working with other counties who are just starting to come around to looking at transit and helping them as they explore. We want to make sure they're not doing it in a vacuum, and it becomes part of a greater connected region, because I think that's going to be good for economic development for the entire region. So thank you, and Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions from Mr. Tomlinson?
Well, I don't have a question, but I'm still trying to figure out where ATL falls in the line of who's in charge, who's... It sounds like you're a little bit with the Atlanta Regional, ARC, you're a little bit with MARTA, and also, I'm just going to give it some time, and all, and hopefully you all can help us fast-forward the rail for Clayton County. That would be very helpful.
Yeah, so one of the things, so we're going to become the primary agency that looks at any regional projects across the region. It becomes a step before they go in for federal funding. If rail is, like, the commuter rail is a priority for Clayton County, that's the type of information we want to make sure that we know, so that when we're looking at all projects, what are the individual priorities of the region, and how do they connect together? Our job is not to be a substitute for what you know. You're closer to the pulse of your citizens and what they need, but how do we mesh all that together into one cohesive plan? And that's the role that we're going to be playing, because we want to help advance those projects for those communities that they've stated are their priorities, so we can put our best foot forward in Washington to hold down those federal dollars, that's going to be a necessary component to do it.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question, where does the money come? So I'm still trying to figure out the difference between you all and ARC.
Well, ARC, now this entity will be the primary one to look at anything that's transit, and then it will feed into ARC, which is looking at all transportation. ARC looks at transit, they're looking at anything GDOT is doing, they look at any local projects. Transit is one area. Now the state is saying, we can't build our way out of the congestion, and if we don't put a specific focus at the state level on transit, our economic competitive edge is going to erode, because we can't build enough roads to do it. So the state is saying, hey, we need to do this. But the state also recognizes, who's paying the local piece? That is coming from those communities that have opted into the MARTA tax, and those that have already been on the transit bandwagon are paying for it really out of property taxes. So this is a board to make sure that local state control is first and forefront, but how can we leverage what the state has with the relations with the congressional delegation to try to bring as much dollars into the region as possible? So it's complementary to the work of both MARTA and quite honestly, the local areas.
So where does GDOT, Department of Transportation, fall?
GDOT is building out like the managed lane network and the projects that we've done on 75 South. We're working with them in partnership to make sure that the transit component is fully integrated. So before, so take the projects on 75 South, which is just on tip in Clayton and mostly in Henry County. We work with GDOT to say, tell us the plans upfront, so that we can try to locate, say, a park and ride lot. Before, we might hear about it when the general public did, when the speculators started buying it up, it's costing the state more. Now, the project we just did in Cobb, the site that they used while they were building it, their staging site is being turned over to be a park and ride lot. We didn't have to compete, we got the property before the values were skyrocketing because of the speculators. And the other thing we're able to do, nobody wants to be located right next to a highway, except for me. I'll put a park and ride, put that right against a sound barrier wall, put a wooded barrier between that and the neighborhoods. And so we have something which encourages people to take transit, isn't coming up right against people's backyards, and we planned it together with GDOT, who was focused more on the roadways, whereas my agency was focused more on what can this mean for transit? So it's giving a higher profile to transit, because before, and I'm just trying to be very candid about it, the state was focused primarily just on roads and bridges, and the transit piece is important too. So that's my job, to make sure we don't just think it's just about highways.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We're already paying into the MARTA system, so are we expected to also pay into another ATL system as well?
Great question, simple answer, no, you're not expected to pay more. Clayton has made the decision that it's going to invest in the MARTA system. We want to be there. MARTA has lots of resources. There may be a time where, in addition to that, you might have questions, and as a sounding board, you might want to ask the ATL. At the same time, because we're a state agency, there may be some areas where we have more influence in Washington to help attract those dollars than MARTA as an agency. The best thing that we can do when we go up there, if you have the state, because I basically work for the governor, and MARTA, asking for the same thing at the same time, and if we can actually get our congressional delegation, no matter what side of the aisle, saying, yeah, this is a regional priority, it increases the likelihood of getting those dollars. Because all these projects that we're talking about, we're still at the compete nationally for these federal programs. So we're trying, my job is to see if I can get everybody aligned, so we can have a united front in DC saying, fund this project.
And just to be clear, ATL is not taking the place of MARTA, and our contract with MARTA is still intact, and our expectation for commuter rail and whatever else was within our contract is still on track to happen.
It is intact, and I think Clayton County has made its priorities crystal clear. My job is to see what can we do at the state level to help advance those priorities.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for coming out tonight, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Turner. Thank you, members of the Commission.
Next Superintendent, Dr. Marcy Beasley, will give an update on Clayton County Public Schools.
And before the superintendent starts, I just want to make an acknowledgement of City Councilwoman Renee Knight and Janelle Bridges. We appreciate both of you being here tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to just recognize a group of ladies who are doing some incredible work in Clayton County. The Sigma Omega chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, they are doing some wonderful things, and I, I'm sorry, yeah, if you could stand up, please, stand up, ladies, they got on their blue and white, but you see them around, doing a lot of community service.
Dr. Beasley. Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Gregory, Hambrik, and Demott. This is my first time presenting since Demott has been appointed or elected as Commissioner. Thank you for this opportunity. I am coming behind the Atlanta Transit Link. And so I am the Atlanta Educational Link on today, representing our school system here in Clayton County Public, in Clayton County. What I'd like to do very quickly, because I know Chairman Turner will sit me down if I'm too long, and I don't want him to do that. What I'd like to share, and I've asked the team here to place our website on your projector here, your monitor, and so you'll see some announcements going across, so if you could pay attention to that. But what I'd like to do for the time that I do have is share my response often to a question that I get from many individuals in our community. The question goes like this, what are you going to do to improve our school system? I want you all to hear the question. What are you going to do to do what? Improve our school system? Now, the question itself is inherently flawed, because it places the responsibility of improving a school system on one person. That would be the superintendent. Now, anyone who knows me knows I've been around the barn a long enough to know that one person cannot improve a school system. One person may be positioned to bring people together to work toward transportation, education, et cetera, but one person can't do it all. And so my comments today would be, what are we going to do to improve our school system? When I say "we," that includes myself, all the 7,000 employees in the school system, all 55,000-plus students, all 285,000 citizens of what? Clayton County, including all the elected officials, et cetera. It's not a Dr. Beasley's problem, challenge, it's a community challenge. So what are we going to do? So let's talk very quickly. In your folders, Commissioners, we provided a few documents, and I won't go over all of these, but I will refer to them. The first document would be one that highlights Clayton County indicators compared to other counties in the metro area. And a few points that I want to bring to your attention, our challenges, our context. We have a mobility rate in Clayton County of 31%. Cobb has a mobility rate of 16%. Gwinnett, 17%. Our mobility rate is 31%. Median income in Clayton County is $44,000. Median income in Cobb is $72,000. The CAB, $55,000. Fulton, $61,000. Gwinnett, $64,000. Median home values in Clayton, $89,400. In Cobb, $219,000. The CAB, $176,000. Fulton, $268,000. Gwinnett, $185,000. Listen to this. Percent of births to teen mothers in Clayton County, 29%. In Cobb, 13%. In the CAB, 24.9%. Fulton, 16.7%. Gwinnett, 14.7%. Next indicator, percent of college degrees. Clayton County, 19%. Cobb, 45%. The CAB, 42%. Fulton, 50%. Gwinnett, 35%. Percent of children not in preschool in Clayton County, 52%. The lowest is Fulton County, only at 40%. So I share that to share, or to say, that the education that we must do in Clayton County is not a Dr. Beasley's challenge, it's a our what? It's an our challenge. I'm just uniquely positioned as a superintendent to work with all of the trained educators and staff relative to what we've got to do to execute our strategy. So let's talk very quickly about our strategy. I've given to all of you in your folder a document that highlights just a small piece of our strategy. Our strategy clearly would be to address academic achievement, number one, to ensure we have safe and orderly schools, number two, to ensure that we provide support to all of our students, that we engage our community, number four, and that we recruit, retain, and train up, if you will, highly qualified staff members. So we have some goals, academic achievement, providing support to students, safe and orderly schools, recruiting and retaining, and engaging our community. Now, to do all of these things, we have several things that we're doing. This forum today, you inviting me here is one of them, engaging our community. But we are working clearly to ensure that academic achievement is a priority. We recognize our context, our indicators. We understand all the challenges that come along with the data. We understand that many of our kids come to school not ready for school. We understand many of our kids possibly are not reading on or above grade level. But I want you to know that we see those as opportunities and not weaknesses. They're opportunities. Our schools are moving in the right direction. Are they perfect? And I have to say this, we've got to move away from a community, as a community, maligning our own children in our own schools. We've got to move away from that, and I'm going to share some data as I close to let you know that Clayton County is positioning itself to be one of the most competitive school systems in the metro Atlanta area. You've got to know that, you've got to hear that, and I will share that. But part of our strategy is advanced learning. What does that mean? We are moving away from this remediation mindset, where all, wherever you're doing in Clayton County is always trying to catch up. As long as all you're trying to do is always catch up, guess what? You will never get what? Caught up. So yes, we've got to remediate some students. We understand that, but we're going to spend a lot more time on advancing and accelerating our students. What does that mean? We understand that most, many of our children come to us with deficits, and those deficits often carry with them from year to year to year. So we're remediating those deficits. But just because a student has deficits, that doesn't mean that they should not be afforded high expectations and access to high expectations through a rigorous advanced curriculum. So in Clayton County, starting next year, all sixth graders will take accelerated math towards completing algebra in the eighth grade, first time to ever occur. All rising ninth-grade students will be expected to take some type of advanced learning class, some type of advanced placement, dual enrollment, et cetera. Someone says, well, they won't all be able to do it? Well, my philosophy is this, if currently we're only at 10%, but I shoot for 100%, I'm better off if I landed 80%, right? So why not have high expectations for all students and provide them the support that they need to reach those expectations? Our students have tools right now, for the first time in the history of this school system, every single one of them, they all have a tool to work on their reading and math scores beyond what the teachers are doing in the classrooms. They know exactly what levels they should be on, at a minimum, and we want them to not only achieve that minimum level, but to go well beyond that level. So all of our students are working on right now, reading and math beyond what teachers are doing in the classroom, and we are seeing a trending upward in our data. We're seeing a decrease in our discipline issues. Are our kids perfect? No, they're not. Were you all perfect when you were in school? You probably were not. They're not perfect. And as a matter of fact, I just read to you the indicators. All these indicators have implications for families and challenges that families have. So our children are not coming from perfect households, therefore, they don't come to the school and behave perfectly. But I can tell you this, through our wellness model, where we're providing social, emotional support and learning, we are seeing a decrease in all of the top 10 discipline issues that we monitor in our school system. We're seeing significant double-digit decreases. And our outcomes are sharing, are telling us. Listen to this. Someone says, the state report card, the state's grades itself overall as a 76. Clayton is at a 65. Atlanta is at a 73. Cobb is at a 79. The CAB is at a 70. Fayette at a 87. Fulton at a 81. Gwinnett at a 83. Henry at a 66. Rockdale at a 68. Listen, you all, I don't hear these other districts maligning and putting down themselves as they're improving, so why do we oftentimes do that to our children? Listen to this, the governor released his list of turnaround eligible schools. Clayton had... Clayton had zero schools. APS, 15 schools on the list. DeKalb, 12 schools on the list. Fulton, eight schools on the list. Clayton, again, zero schools on the list. We had no turnaround schools, because we had no schools whose averages were low enough to be in that category. The state released its comprehensive support schools list, and intervention list. Fulton, 10 schools. APS, 10 schools. DeKalb, 13 schools. Clayton, one school, and that was the alternative school. You need to know, the state released its targeted support and intervention list. Gwinnett, two schools. APS, five schools. DeKalb, two schools. Clayton, zero schools. The point, our schools are improving. Now, before I became superintendent, I was chief school improvement officer, where we articulated, developed, implemented the school improvement strategy. We were expecting possibly 21 schools on this governor's list. That year, we only, we, we ended that year with only one school on the list. That was Martin Luther King Elementary School. On four pages of schools, Martin Luther King was the only school that had the highest score that year, and they came off the list the next year. What is the point? The point is, yes, we have opportunities, but it's our opportunity as a community. We have a strategy. Our data is trending upward. Our goals are our focus. Our strategies are working. We're getting ready to see an acceleration of our outcomes in the positive direction. We need our community to continue to support our efforts. And so, as I close, what's our next opportunity? Right now, you have early voting occurring in our school system for the continuation of our special purpose local option sales tax, otherwise known as SPOS. On March 19th, in case you can't vote early, will be the general election. But what's at stake here? While I may not can tell you how to vote, I'll tell you this. As a community, do you want a new Lovejoy Elementary School STEM school? Do you want a new construction Forest Park Middle School, a new STEM school? Do you want a new Morrow High School STEM school? Do you want a new college and career academy when other districts around us already have one? Do you want that? Do we want to continue to renovate our facilities and upgrade our HVAC? Because some buildings are getting older. While the building may not need to be replaced, the HVAC does need to be what? Replaced. Do you want us to continue with the Extending Learning Beyond the Classroom Initiative? Where currently, right now, we've begun to roll out to 1,000 students this year, a device that becomes a part of their instructional supplies, basically a Chromebook. Do you want that to continue to include all third grade through 12th grade students in Clayton County public schools? Do you want to continue ensuring that we purchase appropriate technology that teachers are using in our classrooms? Do you want to see more school buses purchased? As buses clearly get old, we need to renew the fleet. Do we want to continue to do that? Do we want to see in the Riverdale area a new le, early learn, learning center that will allow us to offer more pre-K seats? So we can reduce the 50% of our kids in Clayton County who are not in pre-K? Do we want these things? The question is not, does Dr. Beasley want these things? Dr. Beasley is uniquely positioned to help implement and articulate a strategy of lifting and improving the outcomes for 55,000 children. But Dr. Beasley cannot vote on March 19th as one person and pass a referendum. Dr. Beasley cannot go into every classroom. Dr. Beasley cannot convince or tell everyone how to raise their children. It takes all of us working together as a community to move our district towards higher levels of performance. Are we doing that? Yes, we are. Do we need to continue to work together to see those outcomes accelerate? Yes, we do. And so, I'll say this as I close. I've heard different ones say, "Oh, uh, different ones, elected officials are out there advocating against the SPOS and all of that." Listen. All I ask of this community is this. How important are your children? I don't care what the differences are. It doesn't matter what you think about me, your commissioners. What? The question that I have is how important are your children? And SPOS funds, just to be clear, don't go toward anything but capital what? Improvement. How important is it for our children to have these projects that I've listed or I've identified? I will entertain any questions that I have. I could go into more, but I don't want you sitting me down, Chairman Turner. If anyone wants to have a conversation about the work that we're doing, the data that we have, I welcome a conversation about what we're doing in Clayton County public schools to move towards higher levels of performance. Thank you all.
Any questions for Dr. Beasley?
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And I am so glad that you're here tonight to give that information out. I've heard, you know, some of the things over and over, because I do attend those community meetings that you hear, that you have and all over the county. But, um, just a couple meetings ago, someone was up here. The last meeting, giving out negative information. I knew the information was incorrect and all, but those are the kind of things that we just can't do, or don't want to do. We wanna, you know, spread those positive things that you're doing, whi, which is exactly what you've done tonight. Because this with the turnaround schools, I mean, I am just thrilled about that, that Clayton County has zero schools on that list.
Commissioner Hambrick, I believe the article that I read, I don't know if it was the AJC, but it said that the, the home prices in Clayton County had the highest percent increase out of the metro area. It was al, almost 13%, I want to say. I would assure this community, as long as we continue to invest in our children, improve our school system, as many in the metro Atlanta are, are observing, those home values and prices will continue to do what?
Go up.
Increase. All of us have a vested interest in seeing and working together to see this school system improve go in the right direction. It's a community effort.
I just wanna say publicly again, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I have a comment also. Tonight, the Zetas picked the right night. Because Dr. Beasley told you, it's a lot of work out there we have to do. So y'all picked a good night to come out here. So thank you. Also, wondering, there's a young lady in the audience, a graduate of Morrow High. And I see them on Facebook, looking at those renderings of what the Morrow High, stand up, Akela, what Morrow High is gonna look like. And so, they're pretty excited. They're just mad they graduated about five years early, or 10 years early, so, thank you.
Any other statements, comments, questions? Thank you, Dr. Beasley, we appreciate you being here.
Our next presentation is Aerotropolis Atlanta Livable Community Initiative and Concept Design.
Good evening. Uh, A, I should've had another cup of coffee following that presentation. And B, I'm wondering if Dr. Beasley gives any public speaking classes.
State your name for us.
My name is Kirsten Moat. I am with the Aerotropolis Atlanta Community Improvement District. Uh, portions of northern Clayton County are a part of our district. And we would like to present an opportunity to the Board of Commissions tonight. So I appreciate you having me and allowing me some time to speak. I'm gonna keep it brief, uh, so that we can focus on any questions that you might have. And I'm hoping that this will magically work. Thank you. Um, the ARO ATL plan was adopted in December of 2018. You all graciously adopted it, I believe, on December 18th. And in this ARO ATL Greenway Plan, we identified model miles for each jurisdiction, including unincorporated Clayton County. And this plan also had a focus on stakeholder and public input into determining those priority segments. This map shows all of the priority segments that were identified for the entire plan. In yellow indicates the segments that were prioritized for Clayton County. You will notice that there is a focus on the Flint and Mud Rivers. Uh, this is also an opportunity to partner with the Finding the Flint Initiative. If you are not familiar with that, I'll be happy to go into it after I finish the presentation. After speaking with Clayton County staff, Parks and Rec, Department of Economic Development, um, we looked at a number of trail segments along the Flint River to determine which trail we wanted to pursue first. After reviewing all the pros and cons of these different segments, we opted to start at the southern portion, um, of the priority trails and looked at an area where Clayton County already owns the majority of the property, which allows it to be a low hanging fruit, something that we can implement quickly. The other advantage of this particular segment is it connects Southern Regional Medical Center along the Flint River to the north to Charles R. Drew High School. You just heard from Dr. Beasley all of the improvements within the school. This would allow an opportunity for this particular high school to have an outdoor education, educational classroom. This area is covered with wetlands. They can talk about ecosystems, biology. It also provides a health benefit for the hospital connecting Southern Regional. This also opens up some potential partnership opportunities with the hospital and other private entities in the area for future funding. Next slide, please. So we have an opportunity. The Livable Communities Initiative has opened up its process for applications. Applications are due at the end of this month, on March 29th. And we wanted to take this opportunity to continue the momentum of the Greenway Plan and move one of these priority segments for Clayton County into the concept phase and get it ready for construction funding. This is the process that we plan to go through. Uh, we anticipate that it would result in a 15% design and a concept report, which is required by the state in order to receive any additional federal funding. Uh, we will understand the particular alignment. We will look at any potential conflicts with utilities, right-of-way, um, traffic, environmental, uh, and also, um, any, any land acquisition that might be necessary. Uh, in addition to making presentations to Clayton County, we have also been working, working with all the other jurisdictions that were a part of the ARO ATL Greenway Plan. And we've identified the city of Hayville, the city of East Point, the city of Forest Park, Union City, Clayton County, and also the city of Atlanta and city of South Fulton as potential partners in this funding application. This shows a cohesive and, uh, community-driven application. ARC is looking for different jurisdictions to come together and work together on planning transportation projects. This is an example of bringing seven jurisdictions together. Uh, and I think this will make us highly competitive for funding. What we are proposing is that each city requests a total of $100,000 to develop their segment. The LCI application, or the LCI program, requires a 20% match. So that would be 80% of funding through the Atlanta Regional Commission and a 20,000, 20% or $20,000 commitment from each of the jurisdictions. In total, I'm showing a total cost of a half a million dollars with these five cities. With the addition of Atlanta and city of South Fulton, we'll be asking for even more. It's a very large ask, but we will be able to accomplish a lot and move trails and continue to move trails further in Clayton County. Next slide, please. This is our general application, um, schedule. Today is March 5th, we are here at Clayton County. The application is due on March 29th. What we are asking of each of the local jurisdictions is to provide a letter of commitment for that local match piece. Um, and we would like to include that in our application packet. And then, ARC will be announcing their awards in the second quarter of 2019. Uh, the nice thing about ARC opening this application, um, during the first quarter is that most jurisdictions are in their budgetary process. And this project would not be underway until after the start of FY '20. And so, this is not something that has to come out of FY '19 budget. This is something that we can plan for, for next year. Uh, with that, I will be happy to take any questions.
All right, any board member have any questions? You get off easy tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson. Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Continuing my public commenting at the last Clayton County Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting held two weeks ago on Tuesday, February the 19th, 2019, where I commented on your flawed, unfair, unjust prejudice and biased citizen's board selection process. The undeniable, indisputable, and irrefutable facts in this matter is that you have no formal structure, process, protocols, best practices, or established procedures in place to accept the names of interested and qualified Clayton County citizens who express a desire to serve on our Clayton County citizens' boards. Because of this, your flawed, wrong, and biased citizen selection process is a haphazard and an unprincipled process, where any five of you can submit names of the Clayton County citizens that you like and personally want to see serving on our Clayton County citizens' board, mainly because they are all completely and totally dedicated, devoted, obedient, cooperative, local, agreeable, and in full agreement to everything that you do as well as don't do. And because these Clayton County citizens do not hold all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, accountable, responsible, and answerable at all, because of their complete loyalty to you and do not cause you problems or trouble, and are not problematic citizens, they are acceptable, A-OK, and all right in your sight and who you want to see serving on our Clayton County citizens' boards. Because of your flawed, wrong, biased, prejudice, and unfair Clayton County citizens' board selection process, all five of you are able to exclude, shut out, deny, and keep off our Clayton County, off our Clayton County citizens' boards. The Clayton County citizens who you all have a strong dislike for, and who you view and have deemed an irritant, annoyance, nuisance, and bother, and who you find detestable in your sight, and who you feel are deserving of your disrespect, contempt, and disdain, mainly because these powerful and great Clayton County frontline citizens dare to speak out in our spoken and our verbalization of the problems, issues, and concerns in unincorporated Clayton County, and stating in a very strong and powerful way how all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, need to do the job that we elected you to do and address and solve these problems. Because as we all know, that is what all five of you said that you would do when you presented yourselves before us, the citizens of Clayton County, when you decided to run for your commission and chairman seats respectively, and promised to do right by all of us, the citizens of Clayton County, if we gave you a chance by electing you to be our Clayton County Board of Commissioners and the chairman respectively, which we did by coming through for all five of you when we elected you to serve as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners. I will continue with my public commenting on the scrutiny, examination, and at the conclusion, my citizens' evaluation on all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, on this very important issue and problem that is of your own making during the next public commenting session at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting.
Dr. Anderson, let me make sure you clearly understand that board selections are at the discretion of each individual commissioner. And I'm only speak for myself. When I look to place somebody on a board, number one, I look to see if they're qualified. People come up and ask all the time, "Be placed on a, on a board seat." Number one, that they need to be qualified. Number two, they need to be a positive ambassador, somebody who's gonna speak positive of this county. We hear enough about people trying to put us down. We don't need that type of mentality of anybody who sit on boards and represent our interests. And when I say "our," I'm talking about Clayton County citizens. Cause it's bigger than just us. A lot of times, we don't even go to those board meetings, we don't know what's going on on a lot of them. There's a lot of boards out there. They operate autonomously. They make decisions, and then they pass it on, then we, as a board, make decisions from there. But make no mistake about it, those people who I select on, on any board I put on, I want them to be positive people. Not somebody who's gonna constantly drag down Clayton County. Any other statements?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I never said I didn't like you. So just to have that comment is wrong. The other comment that you made was to say- The other comment that you made was to say that anybody selected to a board in Clayton County as a citizen is nothing more than basically a lapdog for this board, which is to throw Clayton County citizens under the bus. And I think that is entirely wrong. Again, what he said, as far as looking at folks to make sure that they are qualified in that position, that's one. But the other point is, we have to make sure that whatever board they're going on, that they're able to work collectively for the good of Clayton County. That's what we need. Again, we need positive reinforcement here. We've been dragged down by the, by the region and by the state way too long. And if we don't pick ourselves up, who do we expect to pick ourselves up?
All right, Latonya Jackson.
I'm here to speak, oh, I'm Latonya Jackson. I'm from District, well, I'm from Clayton County. Conley, yes. Okay, I'm here to speak on several items tonight. Let's start, some toes may get stepped on. Oh, well, here I go. Okay, first, guns. I have spoken to several people who have had their firearms taken and removed from them, but they have not received them. It's went on two, three years. And I know one personally that's going on two years now. Well, it's one year, January, May, one year. So, he would like his gun back. All right. And even if, oh, yeah, even if they don't give them back, that's still theft, right? Okay. And then, two sidewalks. I was here in 2013. I was asking for sidewalks for Watts Road. I call that the Trail of Tears. That mean, it's a lot of people walking, they trying to get up to Jonesboro Road, to the bowling alley, to the grocery store. These people don't have cars, and I have a car, and I'm always trying to avoid not hitting them. And I would feel better, we need a sidewalk in there. And the reason being, because it's a lot of houses, Commissioner Gregory, that's been added to our community, but it's no, you know, community improvement as far as, you know, us walking and stuff like that. Even MARTA goes through Thurman Road, Highway 42, but it does not come down Rock Cut. I don't want it coming down my road, my street. But I do want it to go down Rock Cut. They have a lot of apartments and things there that people that don't have vehicles that would benefit them, but they ain't why I'm here about to bust. Okay? And then, the next thing, oh, yeah, and the sidewalks. I spoke to Forest Park Mayor Angelique Butler, Angelique, and she say she would do that. Y'all two get on board with it, Commissioner Singleton, Gregory, and it can happen because the sidewalk, you know, because I've spoke to you about this, it comes, starts in Forest Park and ends in Clayton County. So, y'all would have to get together and get a sidewalk going. I want that sidewalk. I'll use it. And all the other people that will too. And then, Fort Gillum. What happened with that? What happened with that?
City of Forest Park.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's get on now, because now we got a new mayor, and our community, the Mill Run subdivision, we were poisoned. It's a known fact. It's, it's, it's no secret. I mean, they can hide behind, let me call these people out, the Civil Liberties, Civil, let me see, Civil Engineers, Fort Gillum, Forest Park Mayor, we need to call them out. We, we were poisoned. That's a known fact. They put up signs all over our communities saying...
I'm sorry, but your time is up, ma'am. I got one question for you, though. The gun that was taken, why was the gun taken from him? Don't know?
Yeah, I know. I don't want to say.
Well, if it was a criminal act, if it was a criminal act, it's probably still evidence.
Okay. It wasn't a criminal, it was a criminal act, like he was defending himself, so he says, but the police took the gun. Let me tell you, let me tell you.
No, 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 we don't have to get into it. How about getting with the police?
But he took the gun, he just want it back. It's investigation.
What, was it Clayton County?
Yes.
Please meet with one of the two gentlemen back there, with all the stars on the shoulder.
They probably already know me, because I've probably been calling them.
Yeah, that's why they were...
Or they detected, that's why they laughing.
They know you, because they were back there shaking their head when they were like, hey, yes, right back there. Go talk to one of them.
Okay. And who I talked to about the sidewalk?
Oh, we'll, we'll have discussions about that.
Okay. And what about the Fort Gillum? What about that?
Mayor Butler.
Who?
Mayor Butler.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Commissioner Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unelected citizen that resides in District 3 of Clayton County. I would like to expound upon a particular issue that I've been working on diligently, and that is the, the 22 acres that the Development Authority owns. Meeting with private investors, meeting with public, private partnership, structured individuals. And I tell you, in that due diligence process, I must tip my hat to the COO, Mr. Dietrich Stanford. He is a, he's been a wonder in answering my questions, and I love the intellectual bantering to him, and I have moving forward. So, I'd like to acknowledge his profession, and I greatly appreciate it, sir. There's, there's some questions I have. The, there's $9 million already designated for a incubator or accelerator. And Chairman, I think this is, we are trying to enhance your vision, as part of your vision, in moving that business incubator forward in a public-private partnership. I think this will be the first time that a splash project would have the opportunity to be an indirect revenue generator for the county. If we take two or three acres of that 22 acres that the Development Authority owns and possibly do a MOU, or possibly IG agreement, a government agreement, that, that is the actual location of that incubator, then I think that my investors and other partners, we can do something very positive for the millennials in creating an urban village, which is directly across from Clayton State University. So, as, as I move forward, and my people are very, very patient, but the number one thing that I hear quite often, my investors and private individuals want to see Clayton County put some skin in the game. We cannot be codependent on nobody coming and investing in our community. We've worked diligently hard. We've had several meetings, Chairman, with Dr. Hines, Dr. Sears, Dr. Smith, School Board STEM Project. We've done that. Now, I think that we need a course of action. And I would like to know if there's any intent on establishing a MOU with the Development Authority and the BOC, or that we plan on doing an intergovernmental agreement designating that the business incubator be located on the property on Jonesboro Road. So, those are three questions. Secondly, I picked up a young lady at the bus stop, and I took her to the, to, to the mall, because there was no shelter. She was tugging two babies in a stroller, and, you know, it was raining that morning, and I just said, where are our shelters at for the mall? That's all. So, the questions I have...
We are working on, on the shelters.
Yes, sir.
And what was your other question? The MOU has not made a decision as of yet as, as to enter into any kind of IGA, MOU, or anything else. There has been conversations, I know, between you and I, when you asked me that question as to where I would like to see it.
Yes, sir.
But it has not gone before this board. So, that's where we sitting at, at currently.
Yes, sir. Well, I greatly appreciate your answer on that. So, we anticipate that in the next 30 days, 90 days, six months?
Whenever the board moves on it.
Whenever the board moves on it.
Yep. What, what, I'm sure I have further discussion about.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you give me the name of your investors or your people?
Well, unfortunately, unless you're willing to sign an NDA, I will, I cannot disclose that at this particular time. I think I've been talking to Mr. Kafani Stevens. He has the NDA structured, and then I'd be more than happy to share the investors moving forward. But until there's an NDA signed, I cannot disclose my investors.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
I would like to first make an announcement to my fellow citizens and to the board. Mr. Rob Leatherwood sends his sincerest apologies and regrets for not attending this very important Commissioners' meeting. However, our state representative, Ms. Stovall, has called in an emergency public forum on topics of great concern and interest to the citizens of our great county, which he was compelled to attend. Mr. Leatherwood and I will be sharing our thoughts and concerns on these two meet, different meetings. Thank you. To the subject at hand, splash, deceptions, and half-truths. I do wish Dr. Beasley could be here. I spoke and attended the Board of Education meeting last night. To continue, I voted yes for MARTA and a splash to have MARTA bus, bus stops. What did we get? Half of a bus stop, a pole in the ground, and a trash bag tied to it. A proper stop for the riders also has a shelter against wind, rain, sun, and we got a half a bus stop. Again, on the mileage, raising the mileage rate, I voted, and splash, I voted yes to support shortfalls in education. Again, I voted yes as not to increase class size, to better educate those slow-moving students. What did we get? Larger class size. I went to the Board of Education meeting last night. I heard the cries of many teachers and parents about increased class size. I can't tell my fellow citizens how to vote. As for me, my vote on this splash will be most guarded. What Dr. Beasley needs is not to speak to us, he needs to speak with us. The questions I would ask Dr. Beasley, does he have children? And does his support group have children? And do they attend Clayton County public schools? I have nine seconds left. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Seeing there are none.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. I hadn't intended to address the board until I looked at the two presentations this evening. So, the first one I'm going to look at is the MARTA. Now, if you're familiar with Gwinnett, there's a vote going on. The people in Gwinnett decided that they didn't want the 1% sales tax. Now, I know we talked about Mountain View was a 1% sales tax increase to have MARTA expanded up there. We wanted MARTA to go from the airport to Lovejoy, which would be a 1% sales tax. But when you look at it carefully, that's not going to cover the cost. The money has to come, obviously, from the government, which is what he talked about, the funds being distributed by the federal government. You get the federal government involved, you got a lot of surveys, we're going to end up with eminent domain. So, if you know Georgia 400 is going through a problem, because they're going to eminent domain about 100 houses up there just to expand the highway. So, eminent domain is not something to be playing with. Finally, is that MARTA going to be underground, above ground, or surface level? Because if it's going to be surface level, it's going to take you about an hour just to go across the street to the courthouse, because I don't know where you're going to run. Is it going to be elevated? So, anyway, one of the proposals that they did at the MARTA meeting I went to came to about $4 billion. One of the things that you have to be aware of, don't project this to the people as if this is going to happen in a couple of years. You're talking about 2028 at best. Now, with Dr. Beasley, I happen to like Dr. Beasley, but realistically speaking, and I had the opportunity to speak to him at the end of the retreat, and I asked him, the policies that are being implemented, are they being implemented to educate or to expand our test-taking skills? That's not something to be playing with, because taking a test under time is pressure. But when you look at some of these kids can't write cursor, they don't understand geography, hell, they don't even understand history, more or less black history during the month of February. So, where I come from, as an articulate speaker, and he laid it all out, but did you catch a couple of things? You don't talk about a D as if it's a passing grade. Where I come from, they don't fire the team, they fire the manager. At six grand a week, 300 grand a year, $1,500 housing allowance, $1,000 transportation, and you're going to get up there and talk about, it's not a Dr. Beasley problem? Yo, I don't make six grand a week. It's called ownership responsibility and accountability. So, it was a very nice presentation, but my time is up.
Yolanda George.
I'm on here tonight, Yolanda George, Rex area.
Please speak into the mic.
Yolanda George, Rex area. I have a concern.
We can barely hear you, ma'am.
Still can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a concern. When we was here, it was my daughter and I was here last month about my grandbaby, which was pretty paged. It's related by the dog in Forest Park. I'm still having a problem. They did not contact me. The chief of police did not get with me. I left two messages. I never got a return call back. Deputy Duncan, I think that's his name, I called him, and he did return the call and say he was going to a meeting to go back over the file again. Never got a return call back. This problem is not going away, because we want closure, and we want to know what happened. We want to know why he was not arrested for this tragic murder.
Oh, you said the police department did not get back in touch with you?
No.
And who was Duncan?
This is...
You said Deputy Duncan?
I think that's the name, Ryan?
Danikins.
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 Yes.
You spoke to...
I spoke to him. I called him, yes.
Okay. Because he's in the back of the room.
Oh, yeah, I called him.
Did he not provide you with any information?
No. He didn't call me back. He said he was going into a meeting. I never got a recall back, a call back, and I did call the chief of police. I never got a call back. I left two messages, and they never called back. I just wanted to sit down and talk about the situation and go back over, and they can help me understand why they did not, never interview this guy.
Can you get me a call tomorrow? When you're on your way out, they'll give you one of my cards. Give me a call tomorrow, and we'll make sure that...
Okay, well, I just want to let them know it's not going away. It's not.
Ms. Yolanda, I also wanted to just reemphasize, remember a couple of weeks ago, I think you texted me, I said, have you been able to talk with anybody? I said, you can always, you know, contact me if you need to get in touch with them or so forth. And you said, no, that's all right. And I, I was under the impression that, you know, the, you know, that you were kind of just waiting and so forth. So, I, and I apologize. I'm just a little bit surprised, because I checked upon you, just wanted to make sure that, you know, you had, that you were kind of, you know, we, we care about you.
Yes, but it seemed like there was more concern then, when we was here, but after we left and tried to call, like he said, the next day, he never got response back.
And that's when I, right, and that's why I followed upon you. I said, you know, having some concerns, because I know sometimes they, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I know things happen, and I... I'm not trying to make excuses, but I know, um, things happen, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, the dialogue was taking place, and that you were, um, content, you know, whatever, and I said, I, I'll get you in touch with you, whoever you need to get in touch with.
I just wanted to look at it, whether if it was their grandchild, or niece, nephew, or whatever. The shoe's not on their foot, so they really, to me, it's not concerning.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm getting, even my daughter. It happens, that's her baby, so she's taking it harder.
Right.
You know, she can't sleep at night. And she's going through a lot with these Clayton County defects, which have lied, and, uh, her constitutional civil rights was destroyed in court. No, that's just ridiculous.
Please know that we, you know, my, my heart aches for you, it really does. I can't imagine what you and your daughter have gone through with your grandbaby, but please allow us to bridge this communication gap, and I'm sorry to, okay?
I just would like to know why this person not arrested.
Lieutenant Cofield, make sure she has one of my cards before she leaves.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous?
The next item is item number, aye. Recommendation for the Fourth Contract Amendment, ITB eighteen twenty-one, construction of the Northwest Clayton Branch Library for Clayton County, Georgia.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. The recommendation is to amend the current contract. Can't hear me?
Yes, go ahead, speak into the mic.
The recommendation is to amend the current contract for ITB eighteen two twenty-one, construction of the North, Northwest Clayton Branch Library for Clayton County, Georgia, to perform the additional work to bring the site conditions in conformance with the county's contract plans in the amount of eighty-six thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and five cents. Funding is available through the two thousand and nine SLOSH fund. The Department Recommendation Memo and Amendment are attached for you to review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman and his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Well, second.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Habbert?
Yes. Excuse me. Yes, I do. Um, this is the fourth?
Contract amendment, yes.
Fourth?
Yes.
Do we have anybody here representing our program, uh, program manager or somebody here? Oh, you.
I'll try my best to answer your question, Commissioner.
Well, uh, what is the problem? Uh, you know, now this time, they're saying that we are paying for time lost? You know, why are we having to pay for time lost? And what happened with the previous three amendments or changes? And how much money have we put into this project already?
Got it. So with regards to this particular project, this was probably part of the early site package. And what we try to do is, we have the company come in before the contractor record comes in, and actually do the construction side. Um, the contractor record did not take care of erosion control. It was a lot of work that was prohibiting the construct, the construction company that was coming in, which is Albion. So what we've, in essence, have done is we removed the early package, or the person that was coming to do the work on the front end, and we're having Albion do the work themselves. So we had to do an amendment to the contract at the eighty-six thousand in order for them to do the work, opposed to the company of record that was supposed to do the work on the front end.
So where is that, so why do we have a program manager?
Well, I don't think, in this particular instance, it was a program manager issue, it was the fact that the company of record, when we tried to hold them accountable for the early site package-
Isn't that what the program manager does?
Right, and they were unable to perform the work. Hence, is the reason why the actual change, or the contract, or the the actual change in the contract came forth, because they were unable to perform the duties that was outlined in the, in the actual bid.
Are we keeping a list of these companies that do this? You know, we've had this problem before on some other projects and all, and we continue, I think, to go back to these same people, and then they do the same thing, and we're wasting a lot of money, just because it's SLOSH money, and I notice in here it'll say SLOSH, whatever. That doesn't mean that we throw, you know, just waste money back and forth with all these amendments and all.
I agree.
Yeah. We'll end up paying more than what the project is, you know, was estimated to be. I know there are gonna be some changes, but four?
Right, so anytime there's an exceeding the actual bid amount, and sometimes the change orders, um, contract commitment, doesn't always mean that it was a dollar amount associated with it. Sometimes it's just about extending the time. I'll, we certainly can provide you details about what the four amendments were, but all change orders don't always call for there to be a dollar amount amended into the contract.
No, I, I just, I just need to know, you know, so we are paying, who are we paying for time lost?
This is Albion, the company of record is the-
The new company?
Yes, that's the, that's the construction company. They're actually doing the work opposed to the company that was on record, which is Earthworks, that was supposed to be part of the pre, the pre-bid, is the company that could not, um, move forward with actual contractual work that we had in the bid initially. So Earthworks is the one that was supposed to do the work, did not complete the work as prescribed. We now are admitting the contract for Albion to take care of the work themselves.
So who hired these folk that couldn't do the work?
That was a sealed bid, wasn't it?
Well, yeah, it goes through the bid process through Central Services.
We are keeping a record of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's, please, you know.
Any other questions? Alright, here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Three wanted passes. Next.
The next item the board will consider, the request of County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, Resolution two thousand nineteen thirty-one is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a location agreement with Peachy Clean Productions LLC, providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County property will be used for the purpose of photographing, filming, and recording. To authorize the Chairman and his designate to execute the location agreement, and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the ten of the resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Uh, let me point out to you that there is a revised location agreement, uh, from the one that was attached to the resolution. I have a copy of it. It increases the amount that they're paying from eight thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
Alright, is there a motion?
So moved, Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Habbert.
Uh, excuse me. Um, Mr. Hancock?
Yes, ma'am.
You said, eh, an increase, 'cause that was one of my questions, what, what's the profit for the county in this?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand a month, ten thousand a week?
No, no, they're only shooting for three or four days.
Okay.
So during that time that they shoot, that's what they're paying us to utilize our, our venue.
Okay, so are they still at the beach?
Yes, ma'am.
At the-
All the shooting will take place at the beach.
Ms. Patrick is here, if you want her to answer some questions, can she come up?
Do we know what it's for?
Well, no, you can't-
NDA, NDA. Come on now.
I was just wondering, okay. Uh, now, the last thing, the, the liability for the county?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how does that work?
Well, the, the, with regard to the, any, any liability arising from the production crew, they are required by the agreement to provide insurance to cover that and to indemnify the county.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
I didn't have any. I just wanna make sure, Ms. Patrick was here, you didn't have any other questions, or nobody?
Oh, no, that's it, that's it, just the amount we were getting and the liability.
Okay.
Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous?
We do a, lead a very short executive session for litigation and, uh, real estate.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointees.
Alright, next. Litigation and, uh-
You say litigation?
Real estate.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, next is appointment to the Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities Region Three Advisory Council. Field expiring term of Brenda Roberts. I think she's served out her two terms already, ineligible to serve anymore. Uh, her term expires on April second, twenty nineteen. Are there any recommendations? Okay, we'll hold her, uh, her appointment, or that appointment till next meeting. Next one is also appointment to the Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities Region Three Advisory Council. Board to field the expiring term of Diane, Diana Williams. Term expires on April second, twenty nineteen. Any recommendations? I spoke to Ms. Williams, and she does, or would like to serve again, so I'll make that a, uh, motion to, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous? Last appointment is to the Animal Control Board, field the unexpired term of Donald W. McMillan Senior. The term expires on March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Anybody have any recommendations?
Does that appointment have to be, um, a veterinarian?
No.
Does anybody know?
No.
Okay.
But I have a recommendation, uh, Ms. Barbara McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous? Uh, Madam Clerk, that concludes our agenda. We have a motion to go into executive session for real estate and, uh, litigation. Is there a motion? I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous? James? You good?
Alright, motion to reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous? Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous?
Good night.